Thank you. We're ready to reconvene. Our audio seems to be working now. Thank you for bearing with us. We are at the public presentation and public input part of our agenda. And this particular time is for members of the public to speak on any issue that is not otherwise on tonight's agenda. You can come to the podium and share about anything that's on your mind under the jurisdiction of the City of Lakeport. Any person may speak briefly about any subject within the authority of the City Council, provided that the subject is not already on tonight's agenda. Per Government Code, Section 54954.3A, the City Council cannot take action or express a consensus of approval or disapproval on any public comments regarding matters which do not appear on the printed agenda. That said, we love to hear what you have on your mind. So if there's anyone who has something to share tonight, please feel free to come forward. No one in the room? Mel, do we have anyone with a hand raised online?
No hands raised.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item is, we have a presentation by the organizers of the One Mile Fun Run and 5K fundraiser benefiting unhoused canines.
Kim had already introduced me, but I'm Val Stallings, and I'm the owner and founder of Send Rover Unover Dog Daycare and Training Center. And I was, and I also have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, which is called A Home for Rover. And I used to pull dogs from both animal shelters and train them, socialize them, and rehome them, just to make space in the shelters. I am now using that nonprofit to have a fundraiser. So I was invited here to talk to you a little bit about the fundraiser because it's a little unique, and some people wanted to know what my interest was and the reason behind my fundraiser. And I'm calling it, what I call it is, the Lake County Dog Crisis. And I'll let you know what I, I described the Lake County Dog Crisis as being, but the funds that I raise in this fundraiser are going to go towards the Lake County Dog Crisis and the people that advocate for the dogs and are supporting the dogs that are in crisis. So, I need to have my notes here. I'm sorry, that'll speed things up a little bit. I was told I have 10 minutes, and so I'm trying to keep it-
You're fine.
-within that timeframe. Okay. So, the money that I earned from this fundraiser, and it's going to be a fun run, 5K event, money's going to go to spay or neuter 20 dogs in Lake County before the end of 2025. We've already spayed two dogs. We have two on the planner to be spayed this week, and the rest of them will happen within this year. The money will also go to some of the people that are involved in cat trapping, spay, and release programs. Some of the money is going to go to an organization in Clear Lake called Clear Lake Animal Association. And if you're watching the city council meetings in Clear Lake, then I'm sure that you've heard that name before. That is Charmaine Weldon, and she is, she runs a business and organization called Clear Lake Animal Association. She is the primary advocate for getting dogs off the streets, putting them in foster homes, raising money, and helping the foster parents that are taking the dogs into their homes. The other people this money will go to is called, it's an organization called Street Dogs. And these are people, their names are Greg Stanley and Jeanette Lamperty, and they have formed this organization, and they are the main trappers in Lake County. And they go out and they trap dogs that have been dumped, or abandoned, or left at houses where people have moved out of. And that is their main activity, is to trap these dogs, and they're very good at that. So, they're going to use funds for new traps and also supplies. They don't want any money, but they're going to need to replenish the things that they use, so that's where some of this money will go to as well. The other money is going to go to Mendocino Inland Humane Society, and those people are a nonprofit organization, and they are actually taking our dogs from Lake County because Clear Lake and Lakeport shelters are full. So they are taking our nice dogs that do not deserve to be euthanized, and they are housing them, and they are fostering them, and so they deserve a little bit of funding as well. So, why did I decide to put on a fun run fundraiser? Well, I came here from Lake Ventura County, and everybody that had a fundraiser, they wanted to do a 5K or a 10K, and that was just my cup of tea. So I thought it was fun to go get some exercise with my dog and be with like-minded people trying to raise money for a good cause. So I thought, well, how well will this go over in Lake County? So I thought I'd make a Facebook post, and I put it out there, and if one person was interested, I thought, okay, well, that was a good effort. If 10 people were interested, then I'd just run with 10. But within an hour, I had 45 people on my page saying, oh my gosh, what a great idea. I want to participate. What can I do? Let me help. So that was just enlightening, and I said, okay, that was my green light. I'm moving ahead with this fundraiser. Well, it's my first fundraiser, and it's a lot of work. It really is a part-time job, and I just have to say thank you to Lake County because they've recognized my business as being valuable, and I work basically 24/7. So I don't have time to trap dogs. I don't have time to foster dogs. I don't have time to pass out food, but I can have a fundraiser to donate to those people that are advocating for the dogs. Okay. What is the Lake County Dog Crisis? I should probably say, does anybody, what do you think is the Lake County Dog Crisis? Well, so I get to go to my next page. It's called the problem page. Okay, so the problem page. So the other thing, besides sharing my fundraiser, I also want to create an awareness as to what is happening with the dogs in the community, and some people actually don't know. They have said, why are you having this fundraiser? And I said, do you know what's happening with the dogs in the community? And they are not aware. And when they find out, I mean, they feel silly that they don't know, but they also usually want to help. So, things that are happening in Lake County, this is mostly Clear Lake, mind you, but I feel that if we don't help Clear Lake, then we are at risk for having the same problems here eventually. Okay? So first of all, there are too many loose dogs roaming the streets. There are no consequences imposed upon maintaining dog laws. There are no consequences for maintaining leash laws containing dogs and/or altering dogs. Unaltered dogs are competing for mating rights and fighting in the streets, and it's a bloodbath, and it's gruesome, and people are videotaping this happening so they can provide evidence to get help. Loose, unhoused, and dumped dogs are becoming impregnated, adding to the population problem. Dogs are encroaching on private property, and people are resorting to protect themselves, and the dogs are being shot. I am aware of three dogs that have been shot in just the past few months. One of them was maimed and is in a foster home. The other was killed instantly, and the other was shot and ran and found deceased in a black plastic bag on the side of the road a few days later. People are being put in desire-straight situations and dumping dogs for the lack of resources and assistance from North Bay Animal Services in Clear Lake. These dogs are forced to live off whatever food they can access. Dogs are forming packs and killing people's chickens, cats, rabbits, and livestock for not only sport, but for food. With Lake County currently being the 10th poorest county in the state of California, and people can hardly afford the basic cost of living, let alone the cost of a spay or neuter from a regular vet. I'm sorry to say that the infrastructure problem rests with North Bay Animal Services in Clear Lake, and they've come to a screeching halt with being able to provide services to the community to do the job that they contracted to do so. They are overbooked with dogs. They are unable to pick dogs up. They're having trouble adopting dogs out. They're not available to provide a welfare check, and they are not participating in humane euthanasia programs. I was called yesterday from a lady who discovered that a vacant house next to her in Clear Lake, a roaming dog had puppies under the house, six puppies. She's been trying to contact people for a week to get help. Everybody is telling her that nobody can help. They are full. Nobody can come pick up the dogs. I told her to go to North Bay in person. They told her yesterday they would do a welfare check today. They did not show up. I called North Bay every two hours. I spoke to a receptionist. They said they would send an officer out. That did not happen. I was told that we are supposed to now call the police department for help, for their non-emergency line, and also email the mayor. I instructed her to do so, and I don't know the outcome, but this is just my personal experience as of today with what's happening down there. So she's got these six puppies. She's trying to help and doesn't know what to do. So, all right. That's just one, one situation. So there's also health concerns for the dogs. So these dogs that are roaming, that means that we're at risk for disease such as parvo and distemper is going around. And also, I don't know if you guys heard, when these dogs are let loose, if they were once a companion animal, sometimes they're wearing a collar. Sometimes they're a puppy. Puppies grow. The collars don't get adjusted, and they have what's called an embedded collar. So Middletown Vet, the trappers trapped this dog that people had seen. The face was swelling, and the collar wasn't growing into the dog's neck. And Middletown said it was the worst embedded collar that they'd ever seen. But these are things that are happening down there that the animal advocates are trying to help with. So, it's not only, those are not only the things happening, but a lot of these dogs are being hit and killed, and one person actually is keeping tabs of the numbers of these instances. It's actually better for a dog to be instantly killed than be maimed, because now you're stuck with an injured dog. And if you take it to a vet, they will not see that dog if you are not the owner, and if you do not have a credit card in hand, and if Animal Control cannot show up to remedy the situation, if you can imagine, what happens? So, just a few days ago, the trappers were planning on trapping a mama dog with three puppies, and one of the puppies was hit and killed. So they had to expedite the process, and the dogs are now at Lake County Animal Care and Control. But the puppies have a chance. They're cute, and they're young, but the mama dog just likes, looks like every other dog there, and they are euthanizing on a daily basis. Not for behavior, but because they need space. Okay. So, there's also potential legal consequences. So if people have tried to ask the governing bodies to assist, and if they cannot help with the job that they're supposed to do, and if something drastic happens, then there are documented cases where people have actually sued cities and counties, and that wouldn't be good for our budget either. Like I said before, I'm also concerned that if we can't help Clear Lake, then these problems could possibly affect us greatly in the same way in the future. So what's happening in Lake County and Kelseyville and with Lake County Animal Care and Control? Well, I can tell you that the biggest problem is roaming dogs, loose dogs, and dogs off leash. There have been three cases that I'll share with you over the past few weeks, and one of them was personally with me. Can I tell them I was on the phone with you?
Sure.
So I took my dog for a hike, and my dog is, the dog featured in this flyer, and if anybody needs a flyer, please let me know. He is a bully breed. I call him a Lake County special. And he also was a victim of dumping. He was dumped on the side of the road in Highland Springs when he was five weeks old with six littermates. I pulled him from Animal Control with two siblings with the intent of training, socializing, and rehoming him, and I fell in love with this guy. And it was good timing because he's my new buddy. So he, I keep him on a leash. He doesn't care for dogs, and it's hard for him to look out the window and watch a doggy daycare and dogs play, 20 dogs out there when he's grumpy with the dogs right in his space. But he's a good dog, and I had him on a leash, and I, just about 75 feet up the hill, I saw a German Shepherd that was by itself and off a leash, and then the people came around the corner. Now, mind you, I consider myself to be a dog handling expert, and I teach people how to prevent accidents and injuries from happening when they take their dogs out in the public, especially with all the loose dogs. My tactical belt consists of a bear horn, pepper spray, a knife, a whistle, a phone, and dog treats. And there have been situations when the dog treats were the most valuable. If I can just keep a friendly dog at bay and toss a handful of treats. But in this situation, this dog from 75 feet to my, you know, the front of my person, all I had time to do was detach my dog from my waist belt. It happened that fast, and it led me to a new way of thinking to teaching people. I had no time to pull out anything to defend myself, and treats certainly were not going to work in this situation. That dog was obviously aggressive and had ill intent for my dog. By the time the dog reached me, I was talking to Kim about the fundraiser, and I said, I don't know, I even said, gotta go, but I shoved my phone in my pocket, and she had to hear the whole ordeal, and I fell upon deaf ears, so I don't even remember that. But I thought, oh my gosh, how horrible for you to have to hear that. The dog reached me. I flipped my dog around. The dog ran off the cliff with its owner behind him. Now, the owner falls off the cliff, and he's grappling for the dog that is coming back to attack my dog. Then the second owner gets to the scene and puts her dog in a bear hug, and they profusely apologize and leave the scene. So that was super scary for me, and to realize that, what if I was just an average citizen? What if I was a senior? What if I had a small dog? That could have been a huge tragedy, and despite there was no impact, and the outcome was, okay, my dog that I'm working on training, you know, that wasn't so helpful for his behavior problems. The other thing that happened, I think that some of you know, is that veterinarian, well-respected veterinarian Chris Holmes' wife Lori was walking her golden retriever down Main Street a few months ago, and two dogs ran out of a hotel room and viciously attacked her dog.
Was that here in Lakeport?
Yes. Everybody stopped to help because nobody could get those dogs off her dog. The dog was injured. The dog is 15, the happiest golden retriever in the world. Fire came. The police department came. Animal Control came and did their job, but the event was traumatic, and I spoke with Lori, and the dog doesn't want to leave the house, and it's not the same. And it's just, it's sad. The dog was injured. I don't know if there were any injuries to the general public, but that happened. The other thing that happened was a disabled person walking a service dog down Lakeshore Boulevard just about three weeks ago. Two dogs jumped the fence. His dog became frightened, wrapped around him, knocking him over. His injuries were fairly extensive. He did have to be treated at the local hospital. So, and then I was at the park the other day, and two dogs ran up to me, and I'm ordering a taser pole. So my belt, tactical supply, was not sufficient, and now I am ordering a walking stick with a taser on the end of it. So I, that's how I feel I need to protect myself. So the Lake County problems are loose dogs and not being able to enforce them, and that is, that's the biggest problem here. Dumping is happening here, but it is happening on Highland Springs and on Toll Road, and I think that those are the primary locations for Lake County. Okay, so I am just about to the end. I hope everybody's still with me. So with every problem, there needs to be a solution, right? So what is the solution to the problem? If we can provide more low-cost spay and neuter clinics throughout the county, if we can help people by providing vouchers, if we have money, if we can provide vouchers for people that they can use at their regular vets, so the vets get paid for their services, and we can make the spay and neuter program happen. Citizen advocates, like advocates like the people that I was talking about, if we can have more people like that bandied together to assist when the organizations and animal control are dysfunctional and unable to provide the community services. I thought I would sign up for this. I'm ready to strap on a plastic badge and go out and write people warning tickets to put leashes on their dogs. I will do that. If we could consider a volunteer animal control program, officer program, we have volunteer police programs. So why couldn't we have a volunteer animal control program as well? Animal Control did have, I talked to them yesterday, they did have, despite the fact they have no vet yet, because we can't attract one, it's just not attractive. I'm sorry. I love this community, and you guys love this community, but some people, it's not their cup of tea. So it's hard to attract vets here. Wasson Clinic can't even attract a vet for more money at this time. And also, I know that they don't have a long-term director, which makes it hard to move forward with any kind of planning or interventions or anything like that. So hopefully, we can attract a good director to run the show and pick up the pace. So, on that note, conclusion section. So I just wanted to tell you about the fundraiser. I want to invite everybody. Does anybody need a flyer?
You can leave them on the back table if you'd like, on the way out, or-
Okay.
-or hang on to them. If they're still there at the end, I can pick them up for you.
Okay, very good. All right. So I'm a flyer hoarder. If you ask me a dollar, I pay, right? Okay, so if anybody has any questions, I basically just really wanted to thank you very much for listening, because I'm an animal advocate, and animals are my passion. I was an ER nurse for 27 years, and I had to leave that dog because my dog business was growing, so that says something. But I greatly appreciate the opportunity to come and create awareness, and I want to personally invite you, Kim. I don't know if you know how talented she is. You see that she's wearing her earrings right now, but she has offered to make and donate jewelry for people to purchase, and that goes towards the fundraiser.
So I was, that was going to be my question, if you were going to mention the other things besides running, because running is not really my plan. Yeah, other things for people to do when they get out there. I know you've got people coming, some interesting things. And just to clarify, so Valerie got me out of my creative slump, and there's a bunch of dog-themed jewelry, that's just fun stuff, dog-themed other things, and it's a direct donation to her nonprofit. It's just stuff that to basically say thank you, here's a suggested donation amount. So I know there's that, but you've got other people doing really interesting things out there.
Yes. So like I said, it was, it started with 45 people expressing interest, and then I thought, you know, at the registration booth, how about if we feed them? So I invited Mother Lovin' from the oven. She's going to come out and have food. And then other people said, do you want me to come? Are you going to have any vendor booths or informative booths? So Nanette Dutcher with State Farm is going to come and promote their Trupanion Dog Health Insurance. And Angela Dow, she is Lady of the Lake, is going to come and talk about dog and lake safety. And we have some people coming to provide some nosework demonstrations. It is dog-friendly, and I have a page of rules for how to behave out in public with your dog if you choose to bring your dog. But if you have any talents that you would like to bring to this event, I would be happy to have you come, and-
It's on what day?
It is May 17th, Saturday. It starts at 9:00 in the morning. So if you like to run, you get to run. If you like to walk, you get to walk, and you can bring your dog. And there are going to be other people there. I just, they're adding on by the day. Oh, and an auction! So then people just started to donate things for auctions. Wonderful, wonderful things. So I'm really excited, and this was really fun, and it was nice to be here and share this. So does anybody have any questions?
Not really a question, but more of a comment.
Okay.
Just, I think that you advocating for the animals and being the voice for the ones that don't have a voice is huge, and then also having like-minded people that you can delegate different responsibilities to, to take that load off of you, is huge.
Yes.
And I wish you the best success. I plan on being at the event, and maybe in the years to come, it'll be, it'll just really start, you know, becoming really big. So I applaud you, and we're here to support you. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Christina. I appreciate the kind words, and it's motivating. So-
For sure.
-like I said, I haven't done this before. So I love to hear that, and that just gets me pumped up.
Cool. Hang on. So do we have any comments or questions from anyone in the public here in the room? Online? No?
No hands raised online.
All right. Well, with that, thank you so much for coming out, Valerie. Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Val.
Thanks, Val.
Okay, well, next item is council business. Community Development Director Joey Hanowitz. It's the Parkside Final Parcel Map. Adopt a resolution approving the Parkside Final Parcel Map. This is an item that I will recuse myself from because I live right next to the project.
I will also be recusing myself due to personal financial interest in the area.
Okay, thank, thank you, everyone. As Pro Tem, I'll be running this item. So I believe Victor's got a presentation for us?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Disney. We're just going to get this presentation pulled up, and then we'll get started. Okay, so the item before council today is Parkside Final Parcel Map. So what this project or this item entails is technically the last step in a subdivision for a parcel map application, and so that's what's before council today. It's a little bit of an overview. I'll kind of talk about a few items. Firstly, I'll talk about the city council review, why this review is required, kind of go with some of the housekeeping items there. I'll talk about the site location as well, a little bit of the background of the project and what the steps that the project has already went through. I'll give a description as to what the final map entails, and then we do have to kind of make a finding of how this project is compliant with the conditions of approval that were already approved by the Planning Commission, and we'll go into the recommendation and findings for the project as well. So to start things off, Section 16.12.120 of the city subdivision ordinance indicates that all parcel maps, which consist of four or less parcels that are being divided or created, must be reviewed by city council prior to recordation with the county. And so a final parcel map is the official recordation of a land division, as mentioned, and we determine compliance with the California Subdivision Map Act, with our subdivision ordinance, as well as the conditions of approval that were imposed during the Planning Commission review. And so we just make sure that those conditions are being met or will be met, some conditions that are kind of more into the future during the subdivision or development-specific items as well. And so staff does recommend that the city council adopt the resolution approving this final parcel map, as staff has made the findings that it meets the conditions and the Subdivision Map Act guidelines as well. So to kind of give an overview, this project is located at 1310 Craig Avenue. As your council might know, this does entail the housing project that was approved in 2022 by city council, but this item is only for subdivision of the lots. And so this project does have zoning R1, as well as a portion of it being R3, which was entitled, as mentioned, in 2022 through a zone change and general plan amendment. And the general plan density for this is also residential and high-density residential for that portion that was amended. Now, as mentioned, it's kind of hard to see in the presentation, but I've included it as an attachment in your staff reports. This project does entail subdividing the existing legal lot of record into four separate parcels, and it also includes improvements for the development of Fenway Street and Yankee Avenue. So Fenway Street is essentially going to be extended through the subdivision in there. And then just please note, when I refer to subdivision, it's just four or less parcels. There's technically a term for subdivision, which is four or more parcels, so I just use that term to specify this parcel map. So there will be improvements that will be conducted on this site, but city staff has already been working with our city engineer and the engineers for this project on the applicant's side to put together a bond to secure the improvements, and this will need to be finalized before the applicant can actually record this final parcel map with the county. And just to give a little bit of background, that's just to provide a little bit more security that the improvements will be done. Okay, so a little bit of the project background. So in 2023, specifically June 14th, the Lakeport Planning Commission did approve the tentative parcel map to subdivide this property, and those conditions were imposed, which I've outlined also in the staff report. And then on April 18th of last year- And then on April 18th of last year, the city did hire RSA plus engineers um, as the consulting surveyor to review uh, the parcel map. Um, and then our city engineer reviewed the improvement plans for the project. So we had um, a little extra help to review the parcel map to make sure it's compliant with the city subdivision ordinance and the subdivision map act. The parcel map that was reviewed by RSA engineers, um, we were able to get confirmation from the engineers that the, the final parcel map as proposed by the applicant does meet those requirements of the subdivision ordinance as well as the subdivision map act. And that has been made an attachment of your staff report as well uh, with a letter of approval. And our city engineer has also indicated that the improvement plans are compliant with their city standards um, and therefore it meets all the requirements. And so as mentioned, uh, we did go through kind of the conditions of approval and provide a little narrative. I've generalized it in our presentation today, uh, just for the sake of time, but we do have an analysis in the staff report that goes through each condition of approval. But just to hit on a few highlights, um, the, the final parcel map that was submitted is compliant with the timeframes in recording. Typically, a developer applicant has two years to get that recorded. Um, so we're on track uh, with that as the deadline would technically be June 14th, 2025 for the city council approval um, on that. And the final parcel map was prepared by a licensed land surveyor, uh, which was one of the requirements and the conditions of approval and did require to provide the appropriate documentation, which the applicant did submit as part of the review process, which we've um, implemented as part of the review. The applicant has paid all applicable review fees um, and checking fees, and they'll also be required to pay all recording fees associated with the recording of the final map. So we've checked those conditions of approval and the applicant has been meeting those. Now, in regards to the right-of-way infrastructure, you'll notice that there was some conditions of approval tied to it regarding the infrastructure. And so one of those requirements was to provide a detailed roadway standard for Yankee Avenue and Fenway as well, which was included as part of the improvement plans that was approved by the city engineer. So they've met those conditions. And then they've also included all the easements and dedications um, that are shown on the final parcel map, um, which our city engineer and RSA has indicated are appropriate as well. Then onto the utility um, and fire department requirements. You'll notice that one of the conditions of approval for the sewer and water indicates that they'll need to pay those fees prior to final map recordation. Well, since then, there has been state law that has been passed, which is identified as SB 937, which allows developers to essentially request that those development fees be paid upon certificate of occupancy for development projects. And so we've just made an identification on the final map, um, as well as in the report that uh, those fees will need to be paid prior to certificate, certificate of occupancy compliant with SB 937. Uh, there was a condition of approval added in there for a while, then fuel modification plan, uh, which was imposed by our fire department. Essentially what this is, is the project be compliant during the development phase with um, and chapter, Fire, uh, California Fire Code, Chapter 49, was essentially has requirements with like landscaping, fire-resistant plants, uh, defensible space and those requirements. So once they go through the building permit phase for the development project, we'll have our building division ensure that and the fire department ensure that those are being met. And so kind of to wrap things up, uh, city staff has reviewed the final parcel map and determined that it complies with the conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report, um, that were established by the Planning Commission, the City of Lakeport subdivision ordinance, the subdivision map act, and all the requirements has been satisfied and the necessary easements and dedications have been included. Um, and we've included a resolution with the um, staff report. So that would be the motion to adopt the resolution approving this final parcel map. Um, as mentioned, this would essentially be the last step before moving forward with recording the final map with the county. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation. Uh, but if the council has any questions, I'm available to answer any questions. And we do have representatives of the applicant in the audience today, too. Um, the engineer and surveyor are here present.
Great. Thank you, Victor. Um, do we have any questions from council?
So if we were in some heavy-handed conversations with people in the community and they absolutely didn't like this and they wanted us to stop this, is there any, any way that this could be stopped?
Um, the council would have to make a finding that the project doesn't meet the subdivision map.
Which is not true.
Correct.
So we really don't have it. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
Provided all the conditions are met of the tentative map, this is a ministerial decision that the council has to approve the final map. The discretion is at the tentative map stage, really. And at this point, we're just making sure that the city engineer checked all the boxes and all the conditions were met.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council before I open it up to the public? Okay, anybody in the room would like to speak on this matter? Got one coming up, thank you.
It's like it's me. Nice to see you here, Pro Tem, council. Rest of you. I understand what we're doing here and you understand why I'm here. And I'm going to try not to stray too far so that David doesn't have to get upset with me. But um, I did hear that, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, I did hear that the uh, bridge had been changed to an emergency evacuation bridge. And I wanted to know whether that was true or not. And I was invited to come back.
That is correct. They do plan to install an emergency vehicle access bridge.
Okay, so the Chris Westlake saying that they would put in a vehicular bridge that's been changed.
Uh, there was intentions to look into a full access bridge, but they found that it wasn't feasible. Um, and so the emergency vehicle access bridge wasn't even a requirement for the project from the beginning. And so they've, they've kind of gone above and beyond to, to try to meet the community needs there. And so that's, that's kind of the, the answer to that question.
Okay, I understand that. The bridge was originally proposed by the original developer when this project was conceived. And the developer asked to take it out and now the bridge costs a lot more. This bridge makes sense. And um, as you all know, I'm uh, going to keep it brief, but I'm going to tell you again, I believe that the bridge should be a vehicular bridge. There are two really big reasons. One is the fire potential of this uh, project. We know, all of us know that the, the recent fire uh, rating for that area has been upgraded to severe, extremely severe, whatever it is. It's, it's, I believe it's reached the highest rating that it can be. And this project still has only one way in and one way out. And what I would just finish up and say to the council so I can stay on task here is that this body has the authority to require a bridge, a vehicular bridge. That bridge would provide cover. It would provide an escape for the people that are there, that are going to be living there. It will provide better circulation. I feel that it's necessary based on we have an acute care facility in the area. We have a lot of businesses in the area and it's still, no matter what anybody says, it's a one-way in and a one-way out. And I'd like the city council to consider that in the future. If not, it's, this is on you guys and I know you know that. In the eight years that I've been serving the city of Lakeport for on the planning commission, for on the council, this is the biggest decision that I've seen come across here. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else in the room that uh, wants to make a public comment on this? Not seeing in the room, Mel, any hands raised online?
Uh, no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council for any other comments or emotion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Parkside Final Parcel Map.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Victor. We'll bring in the other two and I'll take my other seat. Yeah, get back.
Thanks, Kenny.
Well done.
Good job again.
There's just a few things to say.
A mayor seat.
And I said it. Thank you guys for coming out. Hope it's not too warm there for you. Seat.
Should have said the same.
Seat.
Did you see heaven, Becky?
We lost Kevin.
Yeah.
Oh, he said, have a good night. He'll be, I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Excuse me.
Said he was just over it.
In your best Home Alone voice. Okay, stop.
Okay, next item is from the uh, Public Works Director, Ron Lad, and the 10th Street Sidewalk Update. It's the update on the progress of the 10th Street Pedestrian Improvement Project at the intersection of 10th Street and North Street.
Thank you, Mayor Costa and council. The uh, the staff report here is really just an update of what's going on to address uh, the bigger 11th Street Corridor um, issuing the pedestrian safety that's uh, been identified in that area through a lot of different public outreach mechanisms. Uh, as recently as the active transportation plan um, that we're working on currently that, that is wrapping up soon. As you all know, 11th Street poses significant challenges to do meaningful improvements there with the right-of-way constraints and the utility conflicts that are there. Really, as we have evaluated 11th Street and spent a lot of time trying to come up with plans on how to address 11th Street. And the problem on 11th Street to me had become overwhelming when you look at the entirety of 11th Street and how do we fix the whole thing? And so, like I said, from public outreach, a lot of ideas came in and moving it over to 10th Street and encouraging pedestrians and bikes to move over to 10th Street. There's less traffic and there are significant challenges to completing the infrastructure on 10th Street. But you know, as we held these public meetings and, and met with traffic engineers and pedestrian safety experts, we, we listened to all of the input we got and we started to look at smaller segments that we could take one bite of the elephant at a time. And so we added the, the bike and ped path between Pool and Manzanita on 10th. And we added the RRFB at 11th and High uh, to make a safer crossing across 11th to kind of decouple the bike and pedestrian traffic on the 10th. And we had applied through APC for bike and pedestrian upgrade money and that, that's what funded uh, these improvements. And as we went through that and looked at the budget, there was a little bit left and we don't want to return it back to the bigger pool for everyone to take a piece of it. And so we identified a, a small portion that, that is a, a small portion, but not insignificant as it marks more progress being made in the area. And as we take these small bites of the elephant, at some point, uh, we'll be able to wrap our arms around um, the 10th Street bike and ped safety improvements. And, and I think it will be a real significant improvement in that 11th Street Corridor area. And I, I mean, we're not limited to looking at that one area of town either, since I'm doing an update on pedestrian safety. We, we're currently really investigating and already utilizing the active transportation plan to apply for design funds, which is always the first step in obtaining construction funds to do the same kind of project on Armstrong Street that would help to decouple bike and pads off of Martin and onto the lesser-trafficked Armstrong Street. And so um, I know that public input is not only important and significant in presenting a successful grant award. It's already, you know, it's also been made very clear that that's a high priority for council. And we, we've heard that and taken it very seriously. And the, uh, these projects are a direct result of not only the engineering and traffic professionals and pedestrian safety professionals, but a, a significant amount of these projects come from ideas from public input on the various plans. And so there is no action required from council on this item. It's just an update on 10th Street. And I mean, I'm happy to say it might be a small segment, but we are making progress on pedestrian improvements.
Great job, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Um, I have a couple of things to say. Um, when I got to go on my tour with you and um, Paul? Jim, Jim. Um, we, you took me on 10th Street and we got to kind of discuss um, the culvert and you know, a couple of things. And then you had showed me where the connection was for the, uh, on Pool and Manzanita. Um, I think that the, the current work that's already there that you guys have done is a great starting point. What I would like to see is, once we get it a little bit further or maybe after this one section is done and complete, I would love to see the city highlight the pedestrian path and really let the public, for the ones who don't know that it's there, I just feel like your guys' work could be highlighted more and let the, the public know that the 10th Street pedestrian path is really a valid option instead of going on 11th Street and where it's not safe, right? I just feel like we could um, maybe do like an announcement formally and let people know, maybe a rah-rah with the city and you know, get eyes on it that way. And then also um, the RFB on 11th that you had mentioned. I also appreciated when you gave me the tour how you guys visualized how that would be used. You go from 10th or you know, and you use the RFB to cross 11th, but your initial, what, what you're ideally going for is to cross to get over to High Street and to the High Street Village and all that connectivity. So um, I think that we are on the right track with um, with these steps and the bites that we're taking out of the elephant. And I look forward to seeing what you guys complete out there. So thank you so much.
Nice.
I have to say.
Any comments or questions from the public in the room? But online, no?
No, no hands raised.
Okay. We'll bring it back. I guess we have no action, we just receive and file.
Can I just make a comment?
Of course.
A couple of things. One, I, I do really like the, the idea of just getting people off of 11th Street. Um, I know it's something that we've worked on too with that connection by Umpqua Bank, um, to then have that thoroughfare all the way to the Safeway Shopping Center. So, so great work overall. I was impressed that we got eight bids. I know that we've talked about the amount of bids for these projects and eight on a, a public works project compared to some bids that we've got. That's a high number. So, so really exciting to take these little bites and to um, be able to shop around with that many bids. So good job, Ron.
I, I will say that Kevin's got it coming up later in his accomplishments on the Open Gov program that the council approved.
Oh, yeah.
Permitting and stuff. Well, Public Works and Engineering took advantage of the Open Gov procurement module on that. And the eight bids are a direct result of the success we've had with Open Gov on the procurement side.
Good.
Excellent. Well, that's good to know.
Great.
Nice to hear.
Yeah, thank you. That was it for my comment.
And Ron, I really appreciate you keeping a vision for the bigger picture, right? It can be frustrating to just be able to do a little bit of a time, but I appreciate that you view it as incremental gains and a way to get to where we want to go.
It all ends.
It's all we can do.
Awesome. All right, so the next item is from the city manager. It's the fiscal year 2024-25 accomplishments. We are to receive and file an update on accomplishments and progress toward the fulfillment of the fiscal year 24-25 department goals.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. This is definitely one of the more fun things I get to do throughout the year. And um, I get to sit here and take credit for the rest of the city's hard work over this year. But uh, no, we've, we've got a lot of exciting um, items going through here. So, what you have in your packet in the staff report is kind of just a general listing of kind of our progress on the various number of capital improvement projects and studies that we embarked upon. You'll see that many of those are completed. Some others, we've got some, we're on track to complete within the fiscal year or through the end of the calendar year. And so, I mean, I think we've got a lot to show for the pieces. The other thing that you have in your packet are the goals from last year together with the department's accomplishments. And we've tried to kind of match those. You know, at the end of each of those accomplishments, you see how it lines up with either one of the City Manager, kind of which are, you know, kind of your City Council overall goals, pieces together with some of the other department goals and pieces. And then you'll see some that don't have anything on them, and that's because things come up through the year and we're able to get through them. I know Paul wasn't expecting to have to do a citywide-led service line inventory, but they took that project on and completed that one with gusto. So, obviously, we wanted to make sure that we got that in the report as well. So, there's a few things in that nature. So, what I'm trying to do here in this quick little kind of summary here, and you guys are more than welcome to interrupt at any time if you want some more details on some of these items, is to kind of try and draw all these things together into kind of our overarching kind of goals. So, we kind of loop a lot of these sort of pieces together. So, we'll start kind of in regards to the Lakeport Police Department. We had a lot of exciting things happen there. The biggest one right off the top was, you know, we lost our wonderful police chief in Brad Rasmussen, who wasn't here. But he moved up to supervisor. We're still able to take advantage of his prodigious skills and stuff. But we also went through a very robust recruitment process that included a lot of community outreach that demonstrated to us that we were on the right track. And we were happy that Dale also provided his application in there. And certainly, that process showed that he was the best fit to kind of continue to keep our department moving along in the right direction. The other things that Dale kind of hit right off the ground running, you and our discussions, was we've had a tremendous amount of success over the past few years in recruiting local folks, providing them with the opportunity to go through Academy and become members of our police force. We find it, you know, it's difficult in rural areas. And then just with the general national trends in regards to how difficult it is to get police officers in general, that continuing that kind of outlook of building within really becomes sort of our mantra. There's a lot more time and resources that get involved in that, but it really has been what's paying off and working best for our community. Dale and his leadership team is pushing that forward. We're giving some of our sergeants the opportunity for leadership training to move up in their position, to potentially move up to their next ranks and the lieutenant and captain positions. And in turn, also doing the same with our patrol officers, providing them with different opportunities to continue to move up in their career and really build up that leadership within. And I thank the council for your commitment when we brought some different options to you in the past couple of years in regards to staying flexible in our hiring approach. You know, Kelly's done a tremendous amount of job. We'll get to that a little later in regards to recruitment and retention efforts and trying to attract laterals over. And by having that flexible ability to hire those different positions, I think continues to. But we also recognize that probably our greatest strength and asset is training the officers that are already here, members of our community, and making that our police force that's trusted by the community. So, there's been a lot of effort in that, and there's been a lot to show for it. And then, of course, I think it goes without saying, one of the most popular things that we've done over the past year is the development of the downtown community liaison officer position, who down committed to on foot in the waterfront and downtown area, visiting, establishing relationships with businesses and kind of partnering to their needs. And going through, that's been really popular. And we're going to continue that program moving forward here as we ramp back up into our high visitation season here in the beginning of May as well. We've also been very successful in continuing some of our special operations and community safety programs. And then also been able to, through different training, also, you know, provide even more options and different special services. For instance, we have one officer who's done some robust training in the detective field and has, we're really happy with the partnerships with the Lake County Sheriff and the Clear Lake Police Department in providing some mentorship and leadership in that program. And they've really helped us and helped our detective candidate, Juan Altamirra, who is also our Officer of the Year, I believe, as well, in kind of continuing in his leadership journey and detective training. And that's already paid off some tremendous dividends in, you know, providing some additional support to our other officers as well. We've been successful in maintaining our partnership with Lake Family Resource Center and our Crisis Intervention Program, which unfortunately, our current Crisis Services Officer has taken a different job, staying local with the Lake County Behavioral Health Department. So, we're very happy for him there. And we are currently working with both Lake Family Resources and Lake County Behavioral Health on some avenues for, you know, getting somebody else in that position and continuing that highly successful program. Other programs are K-9 and K-9 SWAT and School Resource Officer Program still remain strong. And once again, it goes without saying, highlighting the continued success of our downtown business liaison officer program as well. We have over $8 million worth of projects going on in the water and sewer area there, and we're making a pretty good mess of town, but I think it's for good purpose. You know, it's, you know, eight and a half million dollars, you know, basically buying us about two miles worth of water line and one mile of sewer. And what you see there is a number of projects through town, the biggest ones being Lakeport Boulevard, which has been completed, both water and sewer. We are just putting the final touches on the water and sewer line replacement along Martin Street. It was our intention to do Lakeshore next, but the lake levels are a bit high. That makes trenching that out probably not the best thing to do. So, we're going to finish up some of the other smaller projects, the Armstrong section, which I think is where they're at right now, doing their work on Armstrong. And then another water line, small water line project on 10th and Tunis. And then come back hopefully this fall when the water levels are more forgiving to this type of work to complete that Lakeshore project. We'll get into it in a little bit when we talk about some of the paving of kind of our plan to kind of addressing the paving now that we've put those water and sewer line pipes in some of those major corridors. So, that's on track, I think, to be completed, if not by the end of the fiscal year, by the end of the calendar year, for sure. So, that was a major undertaking and a very large project. And, you know, even though these are, these sections of town, these are critical segments to the overall water distribution facility. If you'll recall, in previous building code cycles, you know, the requirement for fire sprinklers in buildings and stuff, what didn't get into that language and what a lot of people don't understand is that sometimes the infrastructure that's under the ground can't even provide that fire, you know, the adequate pressure to provide that fire service requirement that those new building codes require. This, these big projects down Martin and Lakeport Boulevard and Lakeshore in particular, will ensure that not only are we replacing some very old line, but it's ensuring that we're able to provide those needed services to future development. Paving projects this year, the big ones that we were able to complete was a Greensayer and Locke repaving. And then also, the chip seal of our local roadway project this year was the Del Lago neighborhood. We are on track for our big kind of arterial project that we did. We kind of ran out of time at the end of last year when the temperatures died down for us. It wasn't, it was too cold to put that pavement in as we were kind of finishing up some of the utility work associated with the water and sewer project, moving manholes around. So, we wanted to make sure that we got that done prior to doing the project. But I think we're on track, working with our contractor, looking at the early portion of June to do that South Main Pavement Rehabilitation Project, which is a large segment from Lakeport Boulevard to First Street. And so, I think over the past decade, we'll have, you know, together, this is the last segment, we have now done pavement treatments to the entire segment of Main Street within the city of Lakeport, from the city limits all the way up to its terminus, up, you know, north of Clear Lake Avenue. So, this is going to be quite an accomplishment. I know that my truck is definitely looking forward to this project being done. We're also full into both utilities and Public Works meeting regularly and developing our strategic plan for addressing the pavement rehabilitation associated with the water and sewer main projects. These are big, critical pieces. They come with some big price tags, unfortunately. But the Martin Street, Lakeshore, those are some of the last remaining large arterial projects that we have. And, you know, I think since the passage of Measure Z, we've been able to pave over 10, I mean, over 30% of our, over 30% of our entire roadway network. And I think outside of parallel drive, the section that we're all familiar with over there by the DMV, I think that becomes our last remaining arterial section that is in need of help. Getting these big ones out of the way doesn't mean that we don't have to do anything to them ever in the future, but it's, if we, the maintenance aspect of them compared to these full reclamation projects is a much, much cost-effective way of maintaining our roads. And by doing that, it also provides us with some better opportunities actually getting in and getting some more local streets done as well. So, we're making some good, small, what was the analogy you used earlier, Ron? We're addressing that elephant one bite at a time, and we're certainly getting to a spot where we almost can wrap our arms around it and see the whole picture. So, we're making progress. Together with these pavement projects, we've also been able to get a lot of pedestrian enhancement projects done in conjunction with them. So, the biggest ones, I think, that are most noticeable, you'll see those two pictures at the bottom, kind of showing the before and after with some of our filling of the last remaining sidewalk gaps that were missing on Main Street. These were some harder areas. We had this particular area that you see in those pictures is right there by Lupioma Circle. There's a big hillside diving right down into the road. We were able to work with that property owner and come back. We graded that side up there and was able to get some, a nice section of sidewalk in there to provide continuous access along that entire corridor. On the other side of the road, we had in front of Mr. Fordham's Law Practice there over by Sun Dental, and the Chevron was also a remaining gap in sidewalk that was a mess of ADA requirements, the way that things were diving in and out there. And it took a lot of time and effort to get in there, but I think the result has been really good, and that was one of the last remaining gaps in sidewalk there. So, those are complete, and it will all really come together when we get that pavement project as well. 10th Street Bike Way Corridor, as Ron did in his previous item there, kind of showing, we've done a lot of small bits that were in that larger 11th Street multimodal project that included the idea of moving bike and pedestrian traffic off of the small, narrow, heavily vehicle-used 11th Street and making 10th Street kind of a safe area there. We completed that section of missing roadway, putting in a bike path there between Manzanita and Pool. We were able to, you know, put in the safe pedestrian crossing across 11th Street at High. And as Ron mentioned, also found some money to do about 100 feet of missing section of sidewalk there along 10th, kind of North Street, east towards Tunis Street. And then also, with the Greensayer and Locke project, we also were able to address some sidewalk gaps. And I think we did at least two or three ADA ramps, I believe, in that section as well. So, we're definitely committed to continuing those pedestrian improvements together with our pavement enhancement projects. Retail enhancement, we've seen quite a bit movement forward over the past couple of years, and we're continuing to make some big strides in that area. The biggest and most noticeable, obviously, is the revitalization of the old Kmart site into what we can now call Marshalls and Tractor Supply. Both of them, their doors are open, and they are, you know, actively serving the Lakeport community very well. I think Marshalls opened right before Christmas last year, and Tractor Supply a little bit earlier in the summer. And we're in frequent conversations with both Retail Coach, our retail enhancement consultant, and the owners and operators of that facility trying to fill that remaining space there. And they're getting some good leads that I think that we're going to see some fruit from those conversations shortly. Still making some great progress in the revitalization of the Vista Point Shopping Center. I think they actually have a physical demolition permit in. We're working, they're working very closely with Lake Family Resource Center in the movement of their early head start facility. We're actively working on a use permit for the relocation of that site. And when they're out there, I think tribal health is ready to move forward with the demolition of the dilapidated building there. And they are making some great progress on their master plan for the revitalization of that site as a medical campus and retail center as well. I think we have a meeting here coming up with them where they're going to be showing us some of that work from their consultant Studio W as well. We've welcomed several new businesses into the community. A couple of notable ones, the restaurants, Ally Grill, Harlow's Lounge. Artie's Cafe should be opening pretty soon here on Main Street in the old Chopsticks Building. We saw RSA Plus Engineering move into one of the old historical buildings there and did some great upgrades to that beautiful historic building there on Main Street as well. We finished the Dutch Harbor Hotel feasibility study update, and we're kind of leveraging that one out there. The discussion does talk about the market being, its uncertainty is kind of holding back, you know, probably getting lots of, they kind of recommended holding off on a formal RFP in there, but we're marketing that one out and hopefully can visit that one within the year to look at, you know, getting development plans in place for a waterfront hotel there at the old Dutch Harbor site. In addition to the procurement portal that Ron mentioned, one of the other big accomplishments we did this year with OpenGov was doing our business license process through there. Was, there were some hiccups. I know poor Linda was doing a lot of work with helping folks get their stuff on there. But I think the work is going to pay off because now the renewal process on that's going to be tremendously easier this year. But that's also going to be a good tool and ease of help for folks that are looking to open up businesses in Lakeport with that online portal. Other development occurring around downtown, you know, for, you know, it's, to get excited about five new single-family homes, you know, feels a little weird. But I mean, honestly, we have seen no development in the past decade or more. And so, this year, we did process five new single-family homes, and I think one duplex as well. I don't have that listed on here. But what you're seeing in the picture here are the three brand-new homes in the West Side Park subdivision area there on Fenway. We just said, we finished the entitlement process and are working through the $35 million grant award for the Parkside Apartments. They should be breaking ground on those 64 affordable units this summer. Both of our local tribes, Big Valley and Scotts Valley, finished a couple of really neat rehabilitation projects of some old apartments and old hotel units. Big Valley's project was 15 units. Scotts Valley was seven units, rehabilitating those and putting those into use to meet our housing needs around town as well. Disney Watersports Boat Rental completed their entitlement process for the relocation and expansion of their facility to be located along Lakeshore Boulevard. We're very excited to see that one move forward. And we also processed five short-term rental projects throughout town. And I think we have a couple more, you know, moving forward as well. We can't do any of this without our strong workforce. And we've welcomed a few more members to our team this year. There on the right is Amanda Sable, who completes. We are now fully, have all of our positions filled in the Community Development Department, which has been great. With, you know, we've kind of gone up and down in there the past couple of years, but that's going to really help us be able to complete the full gauntlet of tasks and stuff before us. Melissa Carpenter joined us over there in the Police Department on our evidence team. We're also, you know, we've been down a couple officers in there, but we have folks in background, including a lateral candidate. And then we're also looking at sending someone through this next upcoming academy. I believe we have them. And then we've got a few others that we're putting through the background process. We have a conditional offer out that, once accepted, we would be technically on paper, fully. fully allocated in all our positions again. But as we've discussed several times, and we know that the one kind of drawback from the grow within kind of process is that there is a long lead time. So, you know, some of those folks that are going through the academy now will not be out on their own for another nine to 12 months. So, but it is a, a process that we're in place and so we're excited to, to be back to full employment there again. Making one of the endeavors that we had on our list this past year was an attraction and retention marketing plan for our employees that Kelly's taken the lead on. And we've been working with a consultant, developing, we've completed our mission and vision statement. They've also helped us develop a bunch of social media templates to, to boost, to boost our employer recruitment and helped us with some implementing kind of an employee communications, a calendar that we're excited to kind of highlight and, you know, kind of keep, keep and show to the community. Once we get them, we're able to absolutely show them that Lakeport is a wonderful place to work, but being able to demonstrate that through is, you know, kind of a piece that we wanted to strengthen. And so I think we've made some great strides in that, in that fashion as well. Other partnerships in action, we've had a lot of great movement on some of our other big pieces. We're, we're making some strides in putting the Lakeport Community Council into action. There's been some great work on both the Memorial Day Parade and Craft Fair and Pancake Breakfast that saw several of our local nonprofit groups working together to make sure that that went off without, that, that continued through. We also kind of added the, taking advantage of our beautiful gem of Hibboton Park there and, and kind of bringing that into a festive Christmas season. We had a great event where we added, I think, what, another, how many feet to the Christmas tree this year? 14? Was it 12, 14? Somewhere in there. And then also, you know, as much as we, we love our, our friendly community of Kelseyville and they do a great job with their Christmas Day Parade, they don't have the lakefront. So we took advantage of that in full force and, and had a lighted boated parade this year. And that was kind of a very front, you know, the, the new kind of pieces of the Lakeport Community Council really took the lead there in kind of organizing various other groups to come together to put that forward. We just had a meeting here shortly last week where we have kind of reviewed and are getting some bylaws and making some steps and getting that nonprofit status in progress. So some exciting things going on there. Our business walks program this year, we, I think, had probably close to 30 volunteers, members of our LEAD Act team and city staff go out and perish throughout the city. We visited over 100-plus businesses doing our check-ins, checking in to see what kind of, you know, things they're encompassing, what, what they're finding, challenges, what kind of opportunities. We take that information and it, and it really does kind of help us develop our strategic plan for, for outreach and pieces. And so that's always been a fantastic one and we're looking forward to doing that here pretty good. We, we changed over the way we were doing the survey. It, I think we're, we've learned some, some pieces, I think we're on the right track. So we will definitely, I know that the numbers this year on the number of folks completing that survey was down, but I think we've got a plan to kind of improve that moving forward. One of the parts of our grant for the development of the commercial kitchen at the community center was a Unsheltered Meals Program. If you'll recall, we received that money through the COVID pandemic. Now, we did not receive the money until, you know, I think 2021, early 2022. And we had originally a partnership in place with North Coast Opportunities, but for, for various reasons, it unfortunately wasn't able to, to fully get off the ground. I want to, you know, we're going to honor Kiwanis here in our upcoming public hearing on the completion of this project in, in a couple of weeks. But Kiwanis of Lakeport really came through and assisted in utilizing that new kitchen and delivering over 400 meals over a period of six weeks throughout there. And I think there's even talks about how they want to kind of look at continuing that program into the future. So those were all really great programs with partnerships from various members of our community. And, I mean, in that same vein, you know, we, we opened the brand-new park last year, but this year we saw just right off the gate that it is really being utilized heavily and exceeding our expectations. This is what I think was our general vision, but seeing it come together in action, I know even just cruising by there this past weekend, we had a large event in association with the, with Behavioral Health and their, their Child Abuse Prevention Month event. It looked like there was a ton out there. The Lake County Health and Wellness Annual Event was held out there. It was huge and fit the park wonderful. We had some great events like a movie night there, right before the Fourth of July festivities. And there's numerous ones to mention. We've also made some great strides in getting the community center opened up for public use. We completed the HVAC and electrical upgrades there and secured funding for ADA restrooms, upgrades to that site that we're hopefully going to be doing here in the next year. And then also we're moving forward pretty well with some discussions with the Lake County Arts Commission in regards to, you know, assisting in, in operating that site. So that one's continuing. And then, of course, I had to throw in that, that picture there as well of Kiwanis using the, the kitchen there at that site to do their unhoused food program. I know that the $8 million worth of water and sewer projects are kind of stealing the show for everything to do, but I think it's very important to recognize that there are a lot of other projects that we're doing with the bond monies and the other monies through our capital improvement project. The sodium hypochlorite conversion from gas to liquid is going to make for a much more safer and dependable system for our, for our, our, our water. We completed the activated carbon replacement at the surface water plant. We installed three generators this year, but we've, over the past five years, I think we now have permanent generator installations in at almost every single one of our critical facilities around the city to address both natural and man-made PSPS events, to make sure that our, our critical facilities remain optional, operational during those disasters. The Scotts Creek Well Replacement is well underway with our design and engineering, more than 60% completed, and we're looking at doing some test well drills here in this upcoming summer. And as I mentioned earlier, one other kind of state mandate that was forced upon us that the Utilities Department performed in very short order, which kind of had us scared at first on how we were even going to do that, but they, they came through with a great, and we did a whole citywide lead service line inventory. And I think the findings were very minimal, if any, zero. There you go, even better. And also, we're very happy to report that we were able to provide, assist the Pier 1900 development. Their, their fire suppression system was non-operational and we were able to provide them where they connected into our, into our water line. And now they have an operational fire service there and we're still working with them in, to hopefully provide domestic water to them as well in the near future. The last one, I think, you know, kind of is, you'll see on that list that's in your staff report, there are a ton of other planning studies and other project pieces that are underway. And I know it's really easy to go, oh, great, just another planning study, but really, this is our, this is the, the work behind the scenes that goes in our, in our aggressive kind of grant program because unfortunately, I don't see this changing anytime in the near future, but our general fund just does not have the capacity or the ability to keep up with all of our capital improvement project needs. So there are a ton of these planning studies that are underway that position us to go after various grant and other things to kind of get some of those capital improvement projects in the works. So some big ones that we completed this year was a navigation scene or feasibility study. We're on our way to doing the Housing Services Plan. Joey's going to be bringing a report on the citywide fee study here in short order. And then Ron, I think at the end of May is going to be bringing in our consultant to, to highlight the active transportation plan. But as he already noted in his previous presentation today, we've, we're not waiting for it to be completed. We've already kind of started eyeing out some, some grants and opportunities to, to get that underway. We established the Lake County Housing Trust Fund together with the county in Clearlake and leveraging the resources we have there. We've kind of had, had a couple meetings on that and everybody's in agreement that trying to come up with some programming to assist our existing housing stock that is, has some severe, some severe deferred maintenance-related issues is our highest priority. And then, as you see, there's a, a number of other ones in there as well. I think the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan and EOP updates will also be coming to your council here in short order. The other one I think I'm very excited about leveraging is the completion of our SEDS, the Lake County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Update, which does open up a number of different funding through the EDA that we have not been eligible for in the last couple of years. So with that, that kind of highlights there, but as your staff report and attachments show, there's a number of different accomplishments that each department's done. Very proud of the work that everybody's done with the very limited resources that we have. We've, we've done pretty good at rubbing a couple pennies together and getting some good outcomes. And as noted in our goals discussion, a lot of these are kind of building blocks to continuing some additional projects in the future.
Awesome. Any other comments or questions from council?
The one thing that, as I think some of us were here when Jennifer Strong came in and talked about the unbelievable number of people that come, came here for the Canuck Die Challenge. And as many people may not know, you know, the Rotary Club got smaller and we had to go out and do, you know, get Kiwanis to do a booth and get non-veterans to do a booth and so on. I just wonder, is there any thought to maybe, because to me, Lake County is a perfect place for a bike ride or a run. And if that one could get back on there, I think that the benefits to the county bringing people here to see what we have was just unbelievable. And she had, you know, a litany of all these people that came from all around, from different states and everything. Is, is that something that, because that, that's what we need is a coalition, because the Rotary Club couldn't do it and even with all the help of everybody else, it was still a job. But that's one I think would be great to get back on there because it's such a great tourist thing. And there's, you know, there was upwards of 500 people coming here and they weren't locals, you know, there was a lot from out of town. But that would be one to put on their, you know, long-term goals, I think, because it had so many other benefits besides, you know, a fundraiser. That's just what I saw when I think of community council. If they had a coalition, that they could put that back together in some form.
Do you want to tack that one, Stacy? He served up so nicely for the Lakeport Community Council.
That will be one of the goals of the Lakeport Community Council. And with anything, you know, they'll be kind of the go-to to bring people together of, you know, who's interested in doing this, or this is the old event that we really want to see back. And that'd be a perfect one for the bike shop to, to start and then community council connect the people of who's really interested in this one and put it, put it back together. Absolutely.
Yeah, and I mean, I think even, you know, Christina's project that she brought forward with the community center, that grant opportunity, I mean, the, you know, it's not just the events that I see the Lakeport Community Council being of service, that, you know, kind of taking, we, we see, you, you provided a, you know, a micro vision of, you know, some of the struggles that Rotary is having, but those are, you can pick whatever organization you want. That's the same thing there, you know, seeing membership declines, you know, and not even necessarily resource declines, it's more that the membership pieces. And that this is really kind of trying to bring all of them together to kind of maximize those resources and, and go and, and put these pieces together so that we can bring some of those, those things back and enhance some of the things that, that we want to see and activate some of these beautiful spaces.
And then there's the sea plane.
Sea planes, put it in there.
So many things, yes.
Start small with bicycles.
Right. If I may, I will just say with, with the accomplishments, it surprises me every year. This is my third year on the council, but it seems like the list of goals and the list of accomplishments just grow every year. And we're a very small city, but we're, we're mighty. And I'm impressed with the accomplishments that we have and the goals that we're setting and the, the groundwork that we're laying to accomplish those goals. Like you said, Kevin, you can't get some of these projects and grants done without the planning stages. And a lot of what it seems like we tackle are the planning, but that's, that's the building block. So I, I'm just really impressed with all the things we are able to accomplish with such a limited budget and a relatively small staff. So just good job.
I'm, I'm blessed with the fantastic team that I think, you, they see that, I think a lot of places you see, oh, well, that's a $40 million project to do that. So just get paralyzed in that piece. I think we've, we've found a good niche of identifying how we can, just like the 10th Street project that we talked about today, how we can find little pieces to, you know, over time, drive those up. So I mean, I see some of these accomplishments, if you trace back two or three years, there's other little pieces that add up to these, these much larger things. I mean, it'd be great to be able to do, you know, regular large projects like the, you know, Hibboton Park, but we just know that, that, that funding piece isn't there. However, that would not have been possible if we didn't do the early planning stages of the, the lakefront revitalization plan, early on, doing the tremendous amount of community outreach. And when the opportunity did arise, being able to pull that plan out and, and make competitive grant applications.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just oppressed, impressed always with the, not just perseverance, but I think it's like an attitude of excellence that I, every time I'm watching the department heads and listening to them and listening to you explain everything that's going on, I think each and every one of the department heads has a true interest, maybe a passion for getting things done with excellence, doing them well, going after it. And, and I appreciate that, you know, as, as a group, you have dialed into the reality of how, how that happens. It doesn't happen in a big gigantic project. It happens by not giving up, by just having the grit and the vision to continue and to continue and to continue. And so it really comes down to the excellence at which you are all pursuing your, your work and that's appreciated. Thank you. Great accomplishments. We look forward to what the next year brings.
Good luck, Kevin.
We'll make do.
Do we have any comments from public on this item? In the room, online?
No hands raised online.
Great, thank you.
I have a comment.
Good.
I just wanted to thank you for this presentation. It's like my favorite part of the State of the City Report, all the good stuff. And congrats, like a broken record, but congratulations on everything that has been accomplished. There, there are cities that, especially small cities, that are paralyzed and they really don't, they don't find a way, they don't connect the dots. And so congratulations.
Yeah, and we do plan on, we'll, we'll take this presentation and get it out and integrate it into some of our communications pieces. Following up on just, you know, that, the, the management team does a fantastic job, but it goes all the way down the line as well. We were working on our advertisement for the Lake Life Magazine here and, and we came up with a very high-quality product, but I called in my chief building official, my safety officer, my deputy city clerk, my administrative services director, and that, that was, that was our design team that, you know, so I mean, they, any one of those individuals could say, no, that's not what I do here. But everybody cares very highly for the overall quality of the city and they, they did that. They, they came together and put together a really great product. Unfortunately, now they have definitely shown that they have great designability and, you know, so we'll, we'll continue to, to maximize those opportunities as they come available.
Well, I think you pointed out, I want to make mention that clearly the attitudes from the department heads and the management, that is what you instill into the workers, the line workers that are actually getting things done. So, you know, kudos to them as well, to, to everybody who's making it happen. Any other comments? All right, no, great, thank you. Any other comments? All right. No, great, thank you. So that brings us to council communications, and I'll start with Joey Henowitz, the Community Development Director.
The only thing that I have to note, and this is pretty far out on the calendar, but I just wanted to at least make the city council aware that I've been participating in some initial discussions with the Redwood Regional Economic Summit, which is going to be actually held in Lakeport this year. It's going to be held on November sixth and seventh with the main, the main program being held at the Soper East Theater, a room block at the Skylark, and then also probably likely some overflows in Silvera Community Center. So I just wanted to let you know there'll be more updates to come on that, but I just wanted to kind of put that on your calendar. November sixth and seventh, we'll be having a regional economic summit held here in the city of Lakeport for the five-county region. That's all I have.
That'll be cool. Thanks, Joey. Chief of Police Dale Stobie.
Yeah, I wanted to mention the fact that we're having the National Prescription Drug Takeback on Saturday, the twenty-sixth, from ten AM to two PM at the police department. An opportunity to, to get unneeded medication out of people's houses and destroyed.
Thank you. Utilities Director Paul Harris.
Yeah, one update, we had to push back the open house at the water treatment plant to May seventh as opposed to the thirtieth of April. So it'll be same time, three to seven, and we'll see communication piece go out this week on that.
Did you get any more folks, you know, ringing you up to say that they're interested in coming and arranging for their classes and such?
Not yet, but we'll be, we'll be reaching out to the schools to see if we can get some field trips arranged.
Awesome. Great. Administrative Services Director Kelly Buendia.
Sorry, that's such a mouthful. Just a reminder that tomorrow we are holding in-person anti-harassment training. If you're due or if you want to get on the cycle of the in-person, it's offered every two years to council, planning commission, and staff. Should be a great time. Hope to see you there.
Kind of wish you'd stop harassing me about that.
What time was that?
I think it's one thirty.
Oh, it is.
What time is it? What time is it? Ten. Why did I think one thirty? It would have been, it would have been way late.
Hey, Public Works Director Ron Ladd.
Thank you, Mayor Costa. I would just like to let you know that tomorrow I will be attending the anti-harassment.
Good. It's good news.
Good to know. We were all wondering. And watch me go. GIS Asset Management Technician Mel Alea.
Thank you, Mayor. The GIS dude, for short. I do look forward to attending the fun run. I'm a big fan of running, so hope to see you all there.
Nice. All right.
Show us all up.
City Attorney David Rutterman.
I did attend the CalCity's Legal Advocacy Committee meeting on March twenty-first, where we discussed a number of cases that CalCity's is considering joining as an amicus brief. None in our Redwood Empire Division, fortunately. Had one of those already. That's, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. City Manager Kevin Ingram.
I think you've heard enough from me this evening, so no worries.
Councilmember Matina.
I have jury duty tomorrow, so I miss you, but have a great time.
Councilmember Disney.
Yeah, I, last Thursday, we had a LCRA meeting, the Lake County Recreation Agency. Not looking at the, it's not pedal around the puddle, what do we, what do we call it? The Canokdi Challenge, but we are looking at a Canokdi climb, a race to the top of the mountain. So not, not Lakeport-specific, but there's one board member there that is pushing in order to bring a lot of outside people to this event, that we make it an ultra event, which is longer than a marathon, which would be from downtown Kelseyville up both peaks and back twice.
You are joking. You are joking.
I told him, let's.
I'm sure you could do one of these too, right?
Scale it back a little bit, because I want to do it.
Right.
Maybe we'll start with just a climb to the top or a five K, but a pretty cool event and a unique thing that could bring people to the area.
Cool. That's neat.
Yeah, also through that agency and through a partnership with the county, we'll be hosting a summer camp at Hobot, and I might have brought that up before, but that's something that, that we're working on. And we got a report from the city of Clear Lake, who has a recreation coordinator now. They have so many events and camps and stuff going on. In fact, she reported that there are people from Lakeport that are going to Clear Lake for these camps and classes. So I think that that budget-wise is something we would love to have here in the future. But the other thing is tomorrow, I'm meeting with Congressman Thompson. A few business owners were invited to, to sit down and speak with him about the state of the economy and about Lake County specifically. So I won't be, one thirty or ten o'clock, I won't be at the harassment training.
Thank you. Councilmember Perlet.
So at the APC meeting that we had last week, we had a presentation from the Rural Ren, which is, we have a lot of things coming across our plate at the APC, and you hear about money coming around quite a bit. Well, they had a, some representatives from PG&E, and they're giving out free energy efficiency kits. And all you have to do is, you know, go to northernren.org and.
They weren't from PG&E. That's who we hired to handle the regional energy network.
Right, right. But I mean, it's coming, they're, it's part of their program. And if you go to the northernren.org and then you go to residential services, scroll down, and then you hit the button that says energy efficiency kits, it's got some really cool stuff in there. It's got like smart power strips that if you're not using something, it shuts it off. One of the ones that I was really keen on was the one that you can plug like your air conditioner in and find out, you know, how much of that bill is going there. They're going to give you some free LED lights, and all you have to do is send it in. And I did it the very first day, it was April twelfth. So I would recommend everybody, if you know people, they've got the weatherization items. And also, there's residential rebates that are also on that website as well. But it's something that we're doing up here for residential only, unfortunately, but it, it's something that I think everybody could use. I mean, you could get one and then give it away as a gift, and everybody would think you're really cool, you know, for giving them that. But it's, it's, it's not exactly free because all of us are paying for it on our bills. But anyway, it's, I think it's a great thing, and I think everybody should use it going into summer with the air conditioning and, you know, all that stuff. Like you could put in an air conditioner and a swamp cooler and see what the difference is, do the math, and you can figure out how much money you're going to save, but I think it would be a good idea. I'm going to have Kevin maybe pass that on through the, because I think everybody in town would love to save money on electricity. So anyway, I thought that was a great program that APC is also working with.
And what was the website?
Northernren.org.
Northern.
Northernren.org. Regional Energy Network.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Price?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. I have just a couple of things. I did pop into the Children's Festival there at Hobotan Park this weekend. It was in the afternoon. I think it might have thinned out a little bit, but it was a beautiful day, and there were still plenty of people. The kids were having a great time playing shark and had a DJ making that game go. It was just a really pleasant time, very positive, and a lot of, you know, service providers there to make their information known. I'm having a good time interacting with the Splashing Event Coordinator and, you know, making myself available to volunteer for some of the things going on at that event. So looking forward to that, April twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. Also going to break away on the twenty-sixth for the Soper East Groundbreaking Event. That ought to be interesting. And then on the thirtieth, I am speaking at the Rotary for one of their lunches, and the topic is really about child abuse in our county because it's the end of Child Abuse Awareness, you know, Prevention Month. And I'll share the same information that was shared here at our council. But the Rotary is interested in helping, and they're looking for projects for the year. And part of the message that I want to highlight is that pretty much everything that we do to strengthen our communities, to make good, healthy activities available for youth is, is prevention work for the community. So I'm going to give some examples of that, and who knows what the Rotary is going to land on in terms of what they want to invest their time and energy and effort in. And it might come back around to help us with some of our recreation ideas that we have and camps and such. That's so important for the, for the youth. That's it. And so now, I believe we're going into closed session. Last item on the agenda is a closed session conference with labor negotiator, Government Code 54956 dot nine D one. The city negotiators are Administrative Services Director Buendia and Margaret Long. The employee organization is the Lakeport Police Officers Association, LPOA. And we'll, that's it?
Public comment.
Oh, excuse me. Public comment on this item? Anybody in the room? Anybody online?
No hands raised online.
Thank you, Mel.